Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Cooney is absent today. Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slovene.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Vandusen. Oh, Mayor. Alright.
The motion yes?
Good evening, everyone. At this time, can I ask everybody to rise as our clerk, Mr. Shaw, leads us in the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Shaw?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We call the meeting, uh, meeting is called to order. Uh, Mr. Shaw, would you take the attendance, please? Trustee Sutker.
Here.
Trustee Robinson.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Pure Slovene.
Here.
Mayor Protem Klein. I am here. We have a quorum. Next item on, on the agenda is the approval of our consent agenda. I would like to have a motion. Oh, is there anything anybody wants removed from the consent agenda first? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, a motion to approve.
Okay. Uh, motion, uh, whatever your name. Pure Slovene. Pure Slovene, thank you. Of course, you can tell I'm not nervous. Second, by, uh, trustee Robinson, would you take the role, please, sir? Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slovene.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein. Aye. The motion passes. Now we get to the fun stuff. The first, uh, next item is the, is a proclamation, uh, for the, uh, recognizing the Music Theater Works for their upcoming hundred and fifty show. Is Mr. O'Keefe in?
I am, thank you.
Say, would you step to the podium, please?
Thank you.
And, uh...
We have Electra Conalatus, our, uh, our board president as well.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Uh, trustee Robinson, would you do us the honors of bringing the proclamation?
Be my pleasure. Whereas, Music Theater Works has been in continuous production since nineteen eighty and has produced one hundred and fifty major musical theater productions in that time. And whereas, the Music Theater Works is proud to call Skokie's North Shore Center for the Performing Arts in its home, thereby contributing to the village's rich and diverse cultural arts community. And whereas, the Music Theater Works attracts more than twenty thousand patrons to the North Shore Center for the Performing Arts in Skokie and surrounding businesses, restaurants, and shops. And whereas, Music Theater Works has employed more than four thousand five hundred actors, singers, dancers, directors, designers, crew members, administrators, and more than a few puppets. And whereas, Music Theater Works Youth Reach and Youth Connect Programs annually train dozens of young persons in the performing arts, building self-esteem, creativity, and independence. And whereas, Music Theater Works is actively planning its next one hundred and fifty shows, ensuring a bright and lyrical future for musical theater in the Chicago region. Now, therefore, I, George Vandusen, mayor of the Village of Skokie, on behalf of its elected officials, do hereby congratulate Music Theater Works on their one hundred and fiftieth show, "The Producers," a Mel Brooks musical. And encourage all to support and enjoy the many talents performed at the North Shore Center for the Performing Arts in Skokie. We wish Music Theater Works continued success and look forward to the next one hundred and fifty shows.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Uh, if I may say a few words while the President Protem is approaching here. We are so thrilled to call, uh, call Skokie our home. Uh, it is an absolutely wonderful, thriving community. We know that we're looking forward to the next hundred and fifty shows here. We're also really honored to be here this evening with the swearing in of so many wonderful firefighters, public safety people as well. And I'd just like to say, i- in terms of swearing, our next show, "The Producers," has a little swearing in it. So, uh, if you'd like, it opens August eleventh at North Shore Center. We'd love to see all of you there. Thank you so much. Thank you. Can you just move over here just a little bit? Yeah. We'll put you in there.
No, no, you go.
Thank you so much, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for your time, and thank you all. Thank you.
Tonight, we have a number of fire department employees being sworn in. Uh, first, Mr. Shaw? Uh, would you, uh, swear in Michael Greenwood to the position of fire captain, please? Fire Captain Greenwood? I'm sorry, I was premature. Soon-to-be fire captain.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
Aye.
State your name.
Michael Greenwood.
Having been appointed to...
Having been appointed to...
The office of fire captain.
The office of fire captain.
In the village of Skokie.
In the village of Skokie.
In the county of Skokie.
In the county of Skokie.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of fire captain.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of fire captain.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Captain, would you do us the honor of introducing the people who came to share this day with you?
Big list here. Uh, blessed to have my niece, Charis, here. Her boyfriend, Dan. Dane. My oldest son, Aiden. My youngest son, Owen. My wife. My niece, Charis. And my sister-in-law, Simon. Or, uh, behind me. My brother and father.
Oh, yeah. Giant fan, pretty.
And you thought I was bad. Okay. Now, it's my pleasure to call on Commissioner Fur... Sorry. Can I call on, uh, Commissioner Fur Dan Sokoe? To, uh, swear in our next class of firefighters? Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. Oh, Lieutenant Shay, please.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Klein, village trustees, fire chief, hope... What? And all who are here in this very special evening, I would like to especially acknowledge the family and friends of tonight's appointees. This is a proud moment for all of you. I extend my congratulations to you, and thank you for supporting your loved ones during their journey in leading this moment. Tonight, we will swear in one newly promoted fire lieutenant and six newly appointed firefighters. We must never forget that the men and women who serve as first responders deserve our admiration. They are often the first on scene of a tragedy and provide security and comfort to those suffering. We invest our first responders with authority to promote and keep the peace. They have earned our respect, support, and gratitude, and it is my great honor to be part of this special ceremony. Ready? Alright. Please, uh, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Michael Shay.
I, Michael Shay.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America...
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America...
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a fire lieutenant to the best of my ability.
Of a fire lieutenant to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Hold on. We just need a pen.
Lieutenant, would you share with us the people who came, came with you today?
My wife, my kids, my mom, my dad, uh, my dad's wife, and my good friends are also here with us today, so...
Thank you, welcome all.
Don't go away, folks, we have a lot more. I call on Andrew Nichols. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andrew Nichols.
I, Andrew Nichols.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States...
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States...
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And that I will faithfully discharge some duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability.
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Uh, firefighter Nichols, it's your turn. Would you please introduce your family and friends?
Uh, I've got my girlfriend, Delaney, my sister Danielle, and then my parents, Tom and Sheila Nichols-Lev, and Andy and Sims Nichols.
Welcome.
Anthony Fegaroa. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Anthony Fegaroa.
I, Anthony Fegaroa.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America...
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America...
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability.
Of a firefighter to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Uh, firefighter Fegaroa, would you introduce your family and friends, please?
Um, yes, I have my brother, Andrew, uh, my mother, Lisa, my boyfriend, Ray, and then I have my in-laws here, Patty and Brian, and then my beautiful wife, Kayla. Welcome. Congratulations.
Rafael Rodriguez. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Rafael Rodriguez.
I, Rafael Rodriguez.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America...
Do solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America...
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And the Board of Skokie Police and, uh, Board... I'm so sorry.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And, and the Board of Skokie Police Commissions.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability.
Of a firefighter to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Firefighter Rodriguez, would you do us the honors?
Yes, of course, uh, just a question, appreciate that. I have here my lovely mo- mother, my lovely sister, my girlfriend, and my father with me today.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Evangelos Sakopoulos.
I, Evangelos Sakopoulos.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America...
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America...
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability.
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Firefighter Sakopoulos, would you do us the honors? Firefighter Sokopoulos, would you do us the honors?
I have my mother and, uh, my MMA coach Jeff Neal, and then I have all of my great friends that I've made that are also being appointed with me today, so thank you all.
Alejandro. Welcome. Please right, uh, raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Alejandro Altamirano.
I, Alejandro Altamirano.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability.
Of a firefighter to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Firefighter Altamirano, can we meet your family and friends?
Yeah, I have my grandma, I have my girlfriend here, I have my dad, my grandpa, my mom, my aunt, and my uncle, just in conclusion.
Dan Wang, please come up. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Dan Wang.
I, Dan Wang.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
The ordinances of the village of Skokie.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Of the fire department. And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a firefighter to the best of my ability.
Of a firefighter to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Firefighter Wang, you don't get off that easy. Would you introduce your family and friends?
So I have my dad, James, and my mother, Boon, and then my dear brother, Andrew.
To the new recruits, we would all say, thank you for choosing Skokie for your career. Thank you for coming here, and I can safely say you are most welcome. Mayor always likes to brag about how great our first responders are, our fire, our police, and nobody can argue with them, because you are part of a great department. And we hope that, as you saw, two promotions today, captain, lieutenant, congratulations to you gentlemen. And you have officers ahead of you who are tops in their field, so all you can do is improve your craft. Welcome and thank you for coming, Skokie. How about we take a five-minute break and everybody can go congratulate our, our new recruits and our new, uh, people with advancement. We'll take a five-minute break. Yeah, cool. We'll wait. We're gonna go, we're gonna go back on the record, and the next item on our agenda is the village manager report. Mr. Lakerby.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Klein. You're making a difficult job look easy this evening. And, uh, all trustees and good evening, everyone. Item A is regarding, uh, interior and exterior TIF increment financing, commonly known as TIF rehabilitation program grant for Ashione Skokie, located at 8,006 Lincoln Avenue. So the village offers a downtown incentives program to attract and retain more retailers, restaurants, and other commercial users in downtown Skokie. Mr. Alex Argarov, the proprietor of Ashione, an upscale Italian eatery in Hyde Park, has signed a lease for a sister location at 8,000 North. And Alex, could I ask you to just stand? Just, I just wanted everybody to, to see you and to get a chance to be introduced to you. And so, um, this is the northwest corner of Oakton Street and Lincoln Avenue. Mr. Argarov has requested financial assistance under the village's downtown science and technology TIF, interior and exterior rehabilitation programs, to convert the building's vacant commercial structure into a full-service restaurant with a bar lounge, entertainment area, and private outdoor dining and event spaces. The restaurant will feature an extensive wine list, handcrafted drinks, homemade pastries, salads, entrees, appetizers, and desserts. The significant build-out of Ashione Skokie, and Ashione actually means elevated, um, will include construction of a full-service kitchen and back-of-the-house area. Customer bathrooms, new plumbing, electrical, flooring, counters, host area, walls, painting, and other related equipment and improvements have risen significantly, which necessitate the financial request. Construction of an outdoor dining area and installing signage are among the exterior facade enhancements that will also occur. The estimated fixed asset construction costs to prepare the interior and exterior is approximately 1.36 million. So the maximum grant under the village's program, including $3,500 for reimbursable architectural fees, is expected to be the maximum allowed amount of $153,500. It should be noted that Alex is also creating Ashione Cafe to offer a variety of coffees, pastries, sorbet, salads, and sandwiches in a fast casual and grab-and-go environment. This, um, just if everybody can picture the 8,000 North building, um, the Ashione Skokie will be right on the corner of Lincoln and Oakton, and then the cafe is on the west side of the motor court. And so they're kind of booking, the two establishments will bookend the motor court. So this second restaurant that I'm referring to, Ashione Cafe, will necessitate the proprietor to invest an additional $400,000, including construction of furnishings, fixtures, and the equipment. The, there is no grant, uh, request, um, for the second restaurant location. It's just for context of what Alex is planning to bring to downtown Skokie. The applicant has made a long-term commitment to the location by signing a 10-year lease with two five-year renewal options. The applicant intends to complete the renovations within the next few months, with plans to open as early as October. I concur with staff's recommendation and respectfully request mayor and board approval of the interior-exterior rehab improvement grant estimated at a not-to-exceed amount of $153,500 for Ashione Skokie at 8,006 Lincoln.
Thank you. Chair Orange in motion. Uh, trustee Sutker, seconded by trustee Robinson. Anybody have any questions or comments on this? Anybody else wish to, uh, talk about this? If not, uh, yes.
I have a question, and I, I hope this is an appropriate comment. I just want to give a huge shout-out to our economic development manager, Lynn Becker, since, I hope it's okay me saying that this is his final week, I think, with the village. Um, and I just have no idea, I, I have no doubt that, uh, he is a huge fan of this project, and this is kind of a, it was kind of nice to see this on our agenda tonight, knowing that this was Lynn's last meeting, um, because he's done so much work to bring in great businesses like this to downtown Skokie. So I'm just, uh, I just want to give a big shout-out to Lynn Becker.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Ms. Shaw, would you take the rope, please?
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slowen.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, trustee Kl- Kl- Klein.
Klein, it's me. Uh, I vote aye also. And the motion passes.
Good luck and congratulations.
Yes, sir. Welcome to Skokie. Mr. Lakerby, next item?
So, next item is an engagement of legal representation and services for Klein, Thorpe, and Jenkins of Chicago, Illinois. The village of Skokie intends to engage a qualified law firm to provide services related to the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act, as well as representing the Skokie Ethics Commission and the village in any related litigation matters. Staff recommends retaining the services of Klein, Thorpe, and Jenkins for the services and representation referenced herein, with President Jim Farolo serving as the primary counsel for this engagement. Klein, Thorpe, Jenkins' core business is local government law, and the firm represents over 30 municipalities as general counsel, and they have provided these services to date, uh, within the village. I concur with staff's recommendation and respectfully request mayor and board approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to, uh, trustee Sutker, seconded by trustee Pure Slowen? Anybody have anything they wish to discuss about this? Anybody out wish to talk? Matt, take, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, actually, I have a lot of comments and a lot of questions. Um, and to be honest, I've been trying to kind of wrap my head all day around kind of what I, how I wanted to address this tonight, because, um, there's a lot to this, um, a lot to this legal agreement that's not really mentioned in our, in our agenda tonight. I really want to call the board's attention to, to something, though. Two months ago, at our May 15th meeting, um, we had a really long, really robust discussion about updating our appointment process for village attorneys and, and talking about, you know, how we secure legal counsel. There were some significant kind of points of disagreement, um, between our board, between members of the public, about what that would look like, but there was actually really one point of unanimous agreement, um, in that meeting. All of us really agreed that our village's legal services should stay in-house. Um, all of us agreed that we should really avoid outsourcing legal work whenever possible, but yet that's kind, that's what we're voting on tonight. I was kind of a little surprised to see this on our agenda, because I know we all value our in-house legal department. We're voting tonight on whether to outsource kind of a significant amount of legal work to an outside law firm, Klein, Thorpe, and Jenkins, and a specific attorney, Mr. Farolo. Um, so I have, I have some kind of clarification questions, so we're all kind of on the same page. First of all, there's nothing in the memo about kind of a timeline. So can I just first ask, when did the village first engage Mr. Farolo and KTJ for outside legal services?
January 2023.
Okay, so it's been about six months. Okay. So far, since January, how much has KTJ been paid by the village of Skokie? And how much, and, but there's, and there's also more that's been billed?
Yes. Yeah, there are, um, two invoices that have not yet been paid for $8,811.
Okay. And I think a lot of us know this, but just for everyone's clarification, um, why does this expense, why did this expense not need board approval before but does need so tonight?
So the, certain spending authorities are within the board's responsibility, and certain spending authorities are within different levels of staff, and so the threshold, um, is $25,000 when the village board needs to approve expenditures.
Okay. So that's, now that we're approaching the $25,000 kind of threshold, that's what kind of necessitates this?
That is correct.
There's no mention of kind of a cap, there's no mention kind of of a maximum. Um, according to this agreement, is there any maximum amount of money that this board is authorizing to pay KTJ?
No, this is providing services for specific items and responsibilities, and so, um, I think it would, for example, it would have been very difficult in January, when the services were initially engaged, to be able to anticipate a number of hours that would be required of the services. And so over the last few months, there have been a number- And so over the last few months, there have been a number of situations that have evolved that have required the services of Klein, Thorpe, Jenkins, and so in January, um, many of those circumstances were not known, and so it's very difficult in a professional services contract to have a not-to-exceed price.
Okay, let me, I understand. In terms of precedent, because we've talked about how this board has really long valued kind of not going outside for legal services, is there precedent for this? Is, when was the last time that the village board did anything like this, um, hiring an outside firm for legal services on an indefinite basis like this?
Yeah, the, the indefinite basis, I mean, within the last two months, there was a contractual arrangement with a outside law firm, it has to be, happens to be Klein, Thorpe, Jenkins for specific services, but it was, the entire scope of the project was known at the time of engagement, so there was a not-to-exceed price. But the village has other professional services, um, that we've entered into contracts that do not have, um, a fee structure other than the hourly rate, and actually, Mike Alexic, our Assistant Finance Director, may be able to address that more specifically, but the hourly rate is a common contractual arrangement for professional services.
Also, just so we're on the same page, so the majority so far of this expenditure has gone for legal representation for our Ethics Commission, correct?
The 14th.
Yes.
Okay. And this is, I just want, I want to make sure that I am, that I'm stating this accurately, because I might be wrong about this. Am I correct, so our Ethics Commission is a purely voluntary, it's a volunteer advisory board? It has no binding authority, and it has never made any recommendations to this board? Do we provide any legal service, do we, do we pay for legal services for any of our other advisory commissions that, that are, that have purely advisory powers?
Yes, we've done it in the past. We've done it with the zoning board, when the zoning board has been sued, we, we had to do that. Do you want to get to the verb here?
The verb?
Yeah, I'm waiting for a verb.
Well, so, I know the zoning board, the planning commission, our Board of Fire and Police Commission, you know, these all have some pretty binding authorities, they're not purely advisory commissions like this. This is a, I will be getting to kind of this larger question of why, why does this advisory commission that has no binding power need $350 an hour legal services?
So the Ethics Commission is charged with a specific responsibility per the village code, which outlines their responsibilities as well as references the state ethics code. And so the attorney, um, has, has been engaged to this point with the Ethics Commission, has served as an advisor to the commission in order for, they had never met, um, until the last year or so, and so the, um, the attorney has advised them and helped them understand, um, their responsibilities as it relates to, uh, the village code and the state, um, ethics code.
Okay. I wanna, I wanna, there are a lot of things that I really would like to say to the board tonight, because I feel like I'm coming into this meeting with some knowledge that is not shared by everyone in this board. I am the only member of this board who has personally witnessed Mr. Farolo in action with our Ethics Commission. Mr. Farolo was hired in early 2023 after the Illinois Attorney General's Office determined that our village Ethics Commission, uh, was ironically operating quite unethically. They were holding secret private meetings that completely violated the Open Meetings Act, uh, no public notices, no public agendas, uh, no minutes, no opportunities for public comments, pretty, pretty egregious violations of the Open Meetings Act. I understand that Mr. Farolo was brought in to make, to kind of get our Ethics Commission up to speed and ensure compliance. That is not, not all of what Mr. Farolo has been paid to do, and I, there have been four public meetings of the Ethics Commission, I have personally attended three of them. For months, Mr. Farolo has been paid to essentially run our Ethics Commission. Instead of allowing our commissioners to do really almost any of the work that they are responsible for, the village has been paying Mr. Farolo to really do almost everything, to prepare meeting notices, to prepare meeting agendas, to answer emails for the commission's chair, to write all findings and determinations, to attend all meetings, to tell the commissioners what they should and shouldn't do, this is what we're paying kind of someone $350 an hour to do. I can report that I have personally witnessed Mr. Farolo repeatedly and consistently encouraging our Ethics Commission to not provide recommendations to the village board. To this day, the Ethics Commission has never made a recommendation to the village board in, this is a little cynical of a statement, but in my opinion, I think that's what Mr. Farolo has been kind of paid to recommend. So essentially, we're talking about, what this vote is, we are talking about continuing to outsource our Ethics Commission. For months, an outside attorney has been paid $350 a month to do the vast majority of this commission's work. This is, uh, unusual, very unusual for a voluntary commission, a volunteer commission. Question for the board, does any member of this board believe that our Ethics Commissioners are not capable of managing this commission by themselves? Does any member of this board believe that we need an outside attorney to manage our Ethics Commission?
I just have a, a quick question.
Go.
Just kind of, why did we select a, an outside attorney group to do this work?
An outside attorney group was, um, was selected because, uh, there were, um, a conflict of interest, um, because people were involved in a complaint, uh, that were in the legal department, the in-house legal department of the village. And so the cleanest, best advice that the Ethics Commission could receive was from an outside impartial attorney. We had, um, not had contact or business with Klein, Thorpe, Jenkins, and specifically, um, Mr. Farolo, uh, prior to engaging him, uh, to advise the Ethics Commission.
So it was to avoid because of a conflict of interest with the parties involved?
It was.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else? You wish to, uh?
Oh, sorry, that was actually, we're, I guess we're, we're talking about legal services for a number of things, I'm really, that was just the first point I had about the legal services that are being provided for our Ethics Commission.
You have more?
The second is about, uh, provided services related to litigation. I just want to say, our agenda kind of suggests that this, there's some kind of OMA or, or ethics, our, our agenda kind of suggests that there's been litigation against our Ethics Commission, which is not true, correct? There has not been any.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, uh, how you're interpreting that, but there, there was no intended suggestion that there was litigation regarding the Ethics Commission, that is correct.
What is the intention of hiring KTJ to, like, what is, what is his function going to be in response to this litigation?
He will represent the village.
Will he be, will be, are we paying him to argue that we did not violate the Open Meetings Act?
The village has been served with litigation, and so we're put in the position of putting our best foot forward and defending ourselves against those accusations, and so there needs to be an attorney to do that. And so Mr. Farolo was the person that had advised the board prior to a board's decision related to the matter, and so from a continuity perspective, this attorney has been intimately familiar with the issue, and so he would be retained to represent the village, um, regarding the litigation moving forward if this is approved.
Do you want the trustees to feel comfortable with that?
We could answer that by a vote.
Or, I, well, I'll move to the last point.
There's nothing on the force of, uh, to.
No, I'm saying, I'm not answering the question, but accept the vote.
The most kind of, I think ambiguous part is, it says that we're higher, we're paying them to provide unspecified services related to municipal land use and/or zoning matters as well. Can you be more specific about what this means?
So in the engagement letter, there was specific items that were mentioned as it relates to, uh, what I reported on, and then there was also the statement that if those services are needed, they would be available as well. The village has no intent in utilizing those services, but it was, it's kind of normal in an engagement letter to offer that if the village were so inclined to take them up on those services in the future, but there is no intent of using them for those services.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything, ma'am?
Unlike trustee Johnson, I have been to all four of the Ethics Board meetings. I feel like village stuff has become my own part-time job. I also know that there were thousands of dollars billed for an OMA handbook or something that was put together for the Ethics Commission, while at the last Ethics Meeting where I was the only, I think there was actually one other resident present, um, I had asked the commissioners if they had completed the OMA training. Only the most recently appointed one even answered my question and said that he had. I'm looking at you, John Lockerbie, because I have seen emails where you've communicated with folks about doing this OMA training. I think that if they were to do the OMA training, which I believe is required, A, if they would have done it before, then maybe we wouldn't have to spend thousands of dollars for an attorney to put something together when the training is out there for free. But if you could touch base with them, I have FOIA'd to find out if there are certificates on file, I have, I'm still in limbo on restaurants for the FOIA, but I do think it's important that our Ethics Commissioners complete the OMA training, especially since there have been OMA violations, and then maybe we don't have to pay an attorney $350 an hour to hold their hand for every meeting and do essentially tell the chair, now you're going to make a motion, now you're going to do this, this is how every meeting goes, he is absolutely running those meetings. And I just want to reiterate what I said at the last meeting. Actually, I have a question, do you know when they were requested to opine on the determination?
I'm not sure which issue you're referring to.
Uh, because the determination was received, I believe, this is all from my head, April 28th, I'm not sure if that's correct, but whatever it was, it was the same day as a meeting, a board meeting, or right before a board meeting, and it was brought up, and the mayor said it just came in, and I don't know what we're doing with it, and it was subsequently sent to, and Farolo, 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 I gave.
Farolo.
Yeah, thank you. Um, he wrote a letter, I believe that was dated June 20th, and was marked received June 28th, and this board voted beyond the 60 days.
So I, I understand.
For the statute of limitations, so we put ourselves in this position.
Wait, wait, the mayor addressed this at the last meeting when you brought it up.
I actually asked, no, I asked a question, do, do you know when Mr. Farolo was asked for his opinion?
I don't have the specific date in front of me, but it was approximately May 7th.
Okay.
Thank you. Sir.
Hi, Jeff Berman, Lund Street in Skokie. I've heard, you know, all I want to do is say thank you all, you know, all but one of you up there for what you're doing, is, it's clear that one of our trustees doesn't work outside in an environment to recognize that the legal profession and, and defending situations is, is so complex in today's world, that no league, inside legal department can have all the expertise that's required to handle all the various matters. If you're diagnosed with a severe condition, you find the best specialist you can for that condition, even if you're a physician yourself. And so I want to thank you for wisely going out, hiring experts to defend this village, and I also want to thank you for shutting people down that are asking questions when we're in open litigation that could be used against this village. And I'm surprised that a trustee wouldn't be knowledgeable enough to not bring some of these issues up, it would not be knowledgeable enough to recognize that we're doing exactly the right thing by going outside, hiring experts to defend our village, and I thank you.
Thank you.
If I may offer just a really brief response, I know it's kind of a little bit of pork hard.
No, it, no, you can't.
I'm Emma Yamauchi, longtime on and off resident of Skokie. Um, I'm speaking as a taxpayer regarding this contract and regarding what I've been hearing tonight. First, thank you to Mr. Johnson for trying to educate us on what is going on. I filed a FOIA request and received the invoices and the, uh, letter of litigation that was filed by somebody named Mr. Powell, I think. Um, I'm concerned because as a taxpayer, we're not really defending the village against something awful. No one has attacked us, no one has stolen something from us, nothing like that. Nobody is contesting that we were in violation of the Open Meetings Act. With this litigation.
Ma'am, these, these are all allegations that have been filed, there's, there's, there hasn't been any admission by the village of Skokie, these are all allegations.
I understand that, and that's what I'm stating, no one has, no one has done this, so what we are litigating, what we're defending ourselves against, is not against a violation or an accusation of a violation. We're arguing over, I don't know what, 14, 23 minutes of some meeting, and at the rate we're going, we're paying a thousand bucks a meeting, and as a taxpayer, I'm kind of appalled at that. There is no cap in this contract that was attached to the, uh, the meeting agenda, so, I mean, does the board have an idea, not necessarily about the timeline, but if the original judgment goes against the board, are we going to appeal? I mean, is that going to be more legal services that we're essentially shooting ourselves in the foot with? I really ask you to consider that, because as a taxpayer, I see these, whatever it is, $21, $23,000 that's already been spent, as basically money down the drain, because we are not really arguing about an issue of principle. We have been found in violation of the Open Meetings Act. What we're fighting about right now are these, you know, 23 minutes or whatever it is. So I would much rather see my tax money going for something that's based on principle, rather than on a difference of opinion over 23 minutes. And I would also like to think that there is going to be some sort of end to this, that if the board loses in the first round, then the board is going to basically say, okay, you know, we've spent enough money, we'll take this on the chin, and we'll follow the recommendation of the Illinois State Attorney General. Because that's what, that's what it's coming down to. We're not fighting about an issue of principle, we're fighting about 23 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Reprotem, I'm a resident of Optima, and I have the same concerns of this lady. Basically, I don't know why we're litigating this. Uh, the Opens Meeting Act does not require anything to be closed, it just gives permission for things to be closed, but every meeting, everything could be open, there's no requirement we have things closed. I understand sometimes if we're dealing with some ethics violation, some low-level employee, a clerk who maybe came to work intoxicated, you don't want to embarrass people, but we're talking about high officials, uh, allegations involving the highest officials in the village of Skokie, and I don't know why we're keeping this non-transparent, why we're not letting everyone know what's happening, what has to be secret, I don't understand why 23 minutes have to be secret. We're not, if someone's being embarrassed at the corporation consult, he gets paid a ton of money, and, and he's a high public official, he should be open to public scrutiny, and it seems to me as a taxpayer, that we're, it looks like we're trying to cover something up, we look at our, the website for Skokie, talk about transparent, 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 I don't know why we just don't open up the 23 minutes, be done with this litigation, what are we, what principle are we trying to establish? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Yes, sir.
All right, this is going to be my final statement for the vote. At our last meeting, when we discussed some of the village board's Open Meetings Act violations, and I am not afraid to say that the village board has violated the Open Meetings Act.
Trustee, respectfully, these are all allegations that have been alleged against the village of Skokie, the village is defending them, I would urge you and all the trustees to refrain from speaking about the case that's currently in litigation.
I understand.
Anything you say can be used against the village of Skokie.
I under.
As in a motion for summary judgment where the case could get thrown out on any kind of testimony that you could give, so I would urge you, if you're going to talk about this litigation, you talk about it in the abstract and not go into any factual details.
Thank you. At our last meeting, when we discussed some of the village board's Open Meetings Act violations, I made at that time a very damning statement. I said at our last meeting that there is still. I said at our last meeting that there is still an ongoing effort by multiple elected members of this board to cover up overt misconduct in our village legal department. Misconduct that elected members of this board have both supported and encouraged. When I made that statement at our last meeting, I did not anticipate that we would actually be voting on this cover-up tonight because that is what this vote is for me. This vote is whether to continue to pay outside attorneys to help cover up misconduct in our village in-house legal department. This is a vote to manage some of the symptoms of systemic failures within our village government. And it does nothing to confront any of the root causes of these failures. This legal agreement is a fundamentally unnecessary and a fundamentally counterproductive use of public funds. I am adamantly against this contract. I know many of this members of this board disagree with my assessment. If any member of this board wishes to prove to me that this board is not covering up misconduct in our legal department, you can start by voting against this legal agreement tonight. To me, an "aye" vote on this legal agreement is a vote for conflict avoidance. And to me, voting "nay" is a vote for conflict resolution. I will adamantly be voting against this legal agreement tonight.
Okay. Ma'am, I assume you wish to talk? Yes.
Hi, Rachel Van Hoos. Sorry I wasn't here. My kid's sick at home, but I've been watching on YouTube. I, there's so many balls in the air. It's hard to say who's talking about what, but I think I understand that the contract is for the case being brought against for the FOIA from the guy who has Lovey &amp; Lovey representing him. I just don't know why you do want to keep fighting that because if you're going up against Lovey &amp; Lovey in a FOIA suit, you're going to lose. You're going to lose, and then we're going to have to pay the bill for Lovey &amp; Lovey because you know how that works. So I've been through this, you know, with the city of Chicago dozens of times. Lovey &amp; Lovey doesn't lose, and there really isn't anything to hide. You've all voted to, you know, release the recordings that you have, and I think you did the right thing. It was like a step too late, but I don't feel like it's something that needs to be drug out and fought against. And I appreciate James' apology at the last meeting for violating the Open Meetings Act or, you know, whatever it is we're all talking about anymore. It's a very confusing thing. But in the end, you know, you lose this, we're paying their lawyers too, and they don't cost $300 an hour. They cost like $600, $800 an hour, and you'll be paying them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there is a motion on the floor. We are, this is the, long time ago. Who made the motion?
No motion on the floor.
What?
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For Ja, uh, for.
Trustee Sutker.
Yeah.
Sutker, Trustee Sutker.
For the engagement of legal services with Klein, Thorpe, and Jenkins, KTJ, Chicago, Illinois.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, we have a vote. Would you take the roll then?
Sure.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
I'm no expert in that field. I vote aye.
Trustee Johnson?
This is a very, very, very strong nay vote for me.
Trustee Pure Slowin?
As I have no legal expertise, I vote yea. Yes.
Mayor Protem Klein? I also vote aye. Motion is carried.
Items C, D, and E were approved as part of tonight's consent agenda, and that completes my report.
Thank you, sir. Now we have the report of our Corporation Counsel, Mr. McCarthy.
Good evening, Protem Klein and audience members. All the items on Corporation Counsel's agenda tonight have been adopted with the approval of the consent agenda earlier this evening. Mayor Protem, that completes my report.
Thank you. Next item is new business. Is there any new business on the floor?
May I have a moment?
Of course you may.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Mayor Protem Klein.
You start with the title. It sounds horrible.
I can't even explain. Okay, I just want to take a moment and to take this opportunity and thank and recognize everyone who worked tirelessly behind the scenes to organize an extraordinary July 4th celebration for this village. I think there are many, many heroes that we don't recognize that work in many departments who put a lot of literally sweat into making sure that we had an incredible celebration. But I'd especially like to recognize our first responders who ensured our safety during the celebration. And every one of us were able to enjoy it with the, knowing that the first responders were there to ensure that we could celebrate this country. And thank you so very much for your service.
Thank you, Trustee Slowin. Well said. Also in new business, I'm requesting of the manager's office to look into limiting or doing away with short-term rentals in a single-family residential district. I won't go into the long distertation now, but I just wanted to publicly say that I am starting the procedure for this.
Can you repeat that? I didn't hear the whole thing well. I'm sorry.
Doing away with or limiting Airbnb, Verbo, short-term rental, and single-family residential district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything on the new business? If not, Juliana, we have our Planning Commission, two cases. First case is case 2003-11P. You're on, ma'am.
All right. Good evening. At its June 1st, 2023 meeting, the Plan Commission heard the request of Chicago Land Title Trust Company, a corporation of Illinois, as trustee under the provisions of certain trust dated, agreement dated March 7th, 2022, known as trust number, and I'm not going to read the number, for a special use permit for a meeting hall at 4400 Oakton Street, number 200, in a B2 commercial district. The proposed facility will function as a banquet community hall that will be able to accommodate birthday parties, weddings, seminars, business meetings, and family reunions. The petitioner intends to renovate the existing office space on the second floor and create an open floor plan that will include a stage, dance floor, and seating area. A new elevator addition will be constructed on the west side of the building to the north of the existing bank entrance festivale and will provide ADA accessibility to the second floor space. The main entrance to the space will be via the staircase at the southwest corner of the building. The existing bathrooms will remain. A maximum of 200 guests will be in the meeting hall. However, the petitioner anticipates that the average occupancy will be 108 guests. Fifth Third's Bank current hours of operation are Mondays through Thursdays, 9:00 AM to 5:30 Friday, 9:00 to 6:00 PM, and Saturdays, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The bank is closed on Sundays. The Plan Commission recommends by a vote of five ayes and zero nays with four members absent that the petitioner's request for a special use permit for a meeting hall at 4400 Oakton Street, number 200, in a B2 commercial district be approved, subject to the recommended conditions. Staff concurs with this recommendation.
Thank you. Ma'am, the motion, please. Trustee Sutker, seconded by Trustee Pure Slowin. Any discussion on this?
I have a question.
Trustee Sutker, please.
What are we anticipating the demographics of the banquet hall in terms of, like, is it for young people? Is it all ages? Because I noticed no alcohol, and food is brought in from other places, no hooking on site.
Right. I don't, we didn't, the Plan Commission didn't get into the demographics. I think, like you just stated, they'd be for events that wouldn't necessarily have alcohol and that certainly assess accessibility, so making sure that they're inclusive and able to be accessible and meet all of our codes.
To all, to everybody. Okay, thank you.
Then, Trustee Robinson?
You already spoke to ADA accessibilities. I was wondering, what about the parking? And what sustainable efforts are in the plans for this renovation?
Yeah. So there were, there were questions about the parking concerns of the Plan Commission as well. So the petitioner has an agreement with the Salvation Army across the street so that they would use some of the, and likely some of these events would be evenings, so utilizing existing parking so we don't push into the adjacent neighborhoods.
And sustainable efforts?
I'm sorry, sustainable efforts. So there, we've adopted some new building, some, some new building codes and other things to encourage more energy-efficient measures, other efforts, water, water sense features, other, other efforts to make sure that they're following those things. So we would, we would work with them on those things. There are also, I think there's some native plantings being included in some parking lot. There's mention of the ATM being removed, so there's going to be some landscaping and fixing of the parking lot.
Thanks. Anybody else have anything? Anybody wish to address this issue? If not, would you please call the roll? Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slowin?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein? Aye, and the motion passes. Next is Planning Case Number 2023-12P.
Okay. Also at the June 1st, 2023 meeting, the Plan Commission reviewed an amendment to Section 118-70 of the Skokie Village Code to modify provisions for electric vehicle charging station. This is a result of implementing the recommendations from the village's adopted environmental sustainability plan. Overall, the staff is reviewing different sections of the zoning ordinance to find ways to encourage sustainability. The latest review focused on the electric vehicle charging stations and ways the village could achieve EV, electric vehicle-ready, community certification through the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. With guidance and resources assembled by the caucus, staff will develop clear permitting for EV structure, EV charging infrastructure, and analyze ongoing zoning and parking codes to address the barriers to this infrastructure. So the zoning, there were several zoning changes that the Plan Commission recommended, included that EVs and charging stations can be located in all, all zoning districts, that it would be considered an accessory used to an existing parking lot, that EV stations must be, EV electric charging parking spaces, designs, and set requirements would need to meet the requirements of ADA, ABA accessibility standards, and that the EV charging stations be in accordance with the Illinois Vehicle Code. Additionally, that EV charging stations may be located in required off-street parking spaces and may be counted towards satisfying minimum off-street parking requirements where the determination for parking does not exceed the minimum parking determination. And that the applicant, applications residential, the electric vehicle charging parking stations may not be restricted by time between hours of 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
Thank you. Do you have a motion? I need a motion on this, please. Trustee Robinson, seconded by Trustee Johnson. Does anybody have any questions regarding the EV's charging stations? Go on, Mr. Robinson, go for it.
I was just going to, you know, I'm happy we're finally getting to this point. We've been talking about it. Now we're being about it, and I just appreciate the effort.
I'm glad. Anybody else wish to address this issue? If not, would you please take the roll? Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slowin?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein? Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Our next, last item on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody wish to address the board? Ma'am?
Hi, Rachel Van Hoos. I'll check my privilege before I comment. I want to say that I'm excited about 4400, and it's sustainable simply by reusing a vacant building that's been sitting empty for many years. The building, the bank across the street on the northwest corner there had to be demolished because it was totally irregular and unusable. So it's sustainable just that they're even occupying that space. On that note, I want to thank the village and the commercial landowners down Oakton who responded and totally covered all of their vacant properties, all of them. I mean, it's like almost a dozen, and I'm like, I came home from vacation after the Fourth. I like wanted to cry. I'm so happy. So thank you that the landowners know who they are, the commercial owners, and thank you for doing that. It did bring a question to me when I walked by Armon Cleaners, Armen Cleaners, who own that. And it's actually Cook County owns that one cleaners there that is very derelict. And, you know, I know the talk of land trusts and things like that was part of the sustainable housing thing, and it kind of got kicked. But, you know, there is the question of Cook County owns a property, can they turn it over to the village? I've seen it in Evanston where the whole corner of Church and Dodge there where Gibbs, I'm sorry, Gibbs Morrison Cultural Center is now, and 1400 Church where the U Center were, and several properties down Church were owned by a derelict tax owner. Cook County took them over. Obviously, the city of Evanston took that corner to make the community center, and the Pritzkers built a U Center there. So just that one tiny slice of Oakton got me down that trail of Cook County owns this property here, you know, and what other sections were given up by taxes. But thank you to the responsible commercial landlords. And I had one more thing. I forgot. Thank you so much for your time. I know it's worth three minutes.
Thank you.
Still Kimberly Poca. I can't help but look at this when I'm sitting in the audience. And this is, the first time I saw it, I think, was last meeting. Village Board meetings are intended for the respectful discussion of public policy. Community members and interested parties are encouraged to actively participate in the process. The village board is committed to maintaining an environment where all attendees and participants feel welcome to attend and provide public comment. Intimidation and personal attacks are never acceptable and will not be tolerated. All meeting participants and attendees are encouraged to listen, be respectful of others, and acknowledge that we are collectively striving to support and improve our community, understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. Thank you for your civility, interest, and participation in this collaborative process. Does this apply to closed session meetings? Because I FOIA'd the ones that you voted to release, which I would assume is admitting, and Farolo, John Lockerbie is going to have to help me say his name again. I don't know why I have such a problem with it. I used to call one of the guys running for one of the seats, the pasta, Carba Ganari. There's certain names I just have problems with. But I, his opinion, which I also received via FOIA, admits that there were violations of the Open Meetings Act and that certain things were supposed to be. So I don't know why we're going to pick on one trustee who is admitting that there were violations of open meetings. There's a nickel and diming over what should be released and what shouldn't be released. But by releasing the minutes, but I feel like maybe that closed session was just a bashing session. And it was kind of upsetting to hear some of you delivered the bashing a little nicer than others. Others were just straight-up bashers. So I can only imagine why you're hiding the other 23 minutes.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board? Warren, please.
And now for something completely different.
Thank you.
So first of all, I do want to say thank you for choosing to go forward with electric car charging stations. I think that's great, and maybe we can even have those spots be covered with, like, solar panels so that it can help to offset some of the power that's coming in. Today, I want to kind of continue on this theme that I've started, which is that what happens in your yard doesn't stay in your yard. Things that you can't keep to yourself, bees, weed killers, pesticides, buckthorn, and shade. And for bees, oh, for bees, you have to actually go around getting permission from your neighbors before you even have a beehive on your property. For weed killers and pesticides, that was addressed last time. Thank you for looking into that, and I'm going to take it to the other channels. Buckthorn, I've already tried that. There's nothing we can do about that, apparently. But shade, I think that you can keep your shade to yourself. So imagine that you have, this is around the equinoxes, so around like mid-September, mid-March, the sun is about 42 degrees off of the zenith, right? The zenith is straight up. It's about 42 degrees off. And so here, these two single-story houses, the shade from this house is just creeping over, you know, the property line is in the center, the shade is just creeping over this person's property line. Later in the year, you know, most things aren't growing in the winter anyway, so that person's probably not super worried about it. But we've seen this sort of rise of McMansions lately. So let's say you have a neighbor to the south who all of a sudden decides to build a two- or three-story house. Now, during some prime growing season, your entire, not only is your entire southern yard in their shade, but so is part of your window, right? Like, you probably have a window about here, and now you're not even getting as much sunlight. And sure, as the sun creeps up closer to the zenith toward the middle of the summer, and it never gets straight up at this latitude, by the way, it's always at least about 18 degrees off of the zenith. Sure, so this shade line will creep back, but not all the way, and this house will always have shaded this house. So in the winter, it's even worse, and this person's not even getting any direct light in their windows because their neighbor to the south chose to build. in their windows because their neighbor to the south chose to build this house. So, why am I telling you this? With bees, right, as I said, you need your neighbor's permission. With shade, you should also need your neighbor's permission. If you want to change the shade profile in your neighbor's yard, you should have to get written consent from them as you're submitting the permits to build this thing. I believe that you have the power to change the building codes so that this is actually something that, somebody, this isn't a hypothetical situation, someone actually told me that, sorry, is that my timing?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so anyway, that was a true story, and please look into that. Thank you.
Lauren, there is in the zoning, when you go for the permit, there is some studies requiring, if you're building too high to the property next to you, so it is taken into consideration.
Okay, so then, it just didn't happen for that person, I guess, because she said that her neighbor built this big house and then she couldn't grow anything anymore.
Plus, the neighbor would have to sign off on it or receipt of what was going on.
Okay, so we do have that?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Sorry for wasting your time.
Sir.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to follow up on previous questions I had asked a few meetings ago when I'd asked what type of timeline we were looking at to revisit a second garbage pickup for the village of Skokie. I'm wondering what type of analysis we've done on our potential rodent increases, and I'm wondering if we're seeing any sort of reduction in our waste now that we've gone to one-day-a-week garbage pickup. Wonder if we had any answers on those things?
Mr. Lacherty?
Sure. There has been a reduction in the waste that's been collected per month, looking at the previous year. There has been a reduction in waste.
Okay. And in terms of a timeline to revisit the second garbage pickup day?
You had requested a meeting with the mayor, and he is...
Actually, just if you don't mind, I did not request a meeting with the mayor. The mayor asked that he meet with me. I suggested that we have a public discourse as to when we might have a second time or a time to revisit a second pickup being relooked at.
Okay. Well, the question has been presented to the mayor, and he's not here this evening, and so I don't have any additional information to provide to you.
Okay.
Do you give the total?
The total information?
Yeah. Why didn't you give me that information?
So, part of the rolling out, the going from twice-a-week refuse to once-a-week refuse is to have an opportunity for additional toters to be distributed as necessary, and so there was an initial 60-day period of time where that was not available to residents. And so, that 60-day window has now closed, and so residents that are experiencing more refuse than one toter can handle have the opportunity to contact Public Works, and Public Works is able to work through the details with individuals thinking that they need additional refuse capacity.
So, the second toter would address the additional waste that someone might have that couldn't fit in one bin, but it doesn't address the fact that the garbage will be sitting for a longer period of time, which will attract additional rodents? How do we address that?
We appreciate your comments. I don't think tonight is the time for me to debate the policy with you.
Okay.
I have a question based on it, however, if I may. How are we notifying residents now that they can request, you know, it's all about our communication to the Skokie Village residents? So, obviously, we have to get them to read it as well. I understand the problems.
Right.
How are we doing that?
Right. We're communicating in a number of different ways, how we communicate various village programs, and, you know, so far, we've received 212 requests, and so people do know that there is an option out there, but we'll continue to remind residents that they can contact Public Works and request a review of their situation.
Okay, thank you.
Are we going to be giving a presentation, as the gentleman mentioned, about, you know, down the road, about where we're at with, you know, with the garbage and the, if we are considering bringing back the second pickup?
If that's the board's prerogative, absolutely, be happy to do that.
Anybody else?
I just have a question. Around the corner from my house, I've noticed this brown couch, two pieces, been sitting out there, it seems like two weeks. I know we've had a couple of opportunities for the trucks to come by, but has something changed with the...
No, nothing's changed. If you can get me the address, we'll be sure to take care of it.
Okay.
It's usually Wednesdays when they pick it up, is that correct, Max?
Right.
Thank you. If I can, so I just want to clarify, there is still special pickups within the village on Wednesdays, is that correct, Mr. Lockerbie?
I'm going to ask the director of Public Works to provide the details of special pickups and, because I'm...
That's on Wednesday. And if you have branches that you've tied up no longer than five feet, they will pick those bundles up also.
Max, it may be helpful just to provide some details of what is it that people are allowed to put out, what they're not, and if you can just provide a little bit of detail of, you know, what's usually picked up on the normal day of collection and what's a special kind of pickup and when to request that if necessary?
Sure. Generally, and historically speaking, village residents have been requested to comply with one cubic yard of special material set outside of the container or a special pickup. But if residents have any questions, what we're trying to encourage residents to do is contact us to schedule the special pickups, but that's not necessarily unusual with the twice-week pickup, it was a little bit more fluid for us to pick that up, so we are trying to get residents to work with us and schedule those collections. But yeah, the special pickups are still available, so all they need to do is contact us through the normal communication means, call us at Public Works, go online on the website and fill out the request for a special pickup, and we can accommodate those things for some of the more extreme items that have been picked up in the past. We are trying to be more creative with helping people to identify alternative sources for some of those things and for reuse opportunities for people that have become accustomed to putting out couches and thinking it's a throwaway item. There are other opportunities for reuse of those items that people aren't aware of, so we are trying to educate on that as well. I mean, part of what we're doing here is talking about three Rs, reduce, reuse, recycle, so it's part of the waste reduction, so, but yes, those special pickups are still available.
What would you qualify as an extreme item? I'm just curious.
Honestly, the village, over the years, has seen a lot of construction waste, and the village has been accepting of a homeowner's remodeling, do-it-yourself waste. I will tell you, some of our residents must do an awful lot of home remodeling because they generate an awful lot. Let's just put it that way. And so, things that we talk about in terms of some of our tonnage reduction, since we've gone to once a week, I think we've probably seen some reductions in some of that. So, that's something I would say that we're particularly keen on right now is what are the contractor-type materials that we're seeing in our waste stream? But the typical things that a homeowner puts out, they're cleaning out a bedroom, you know, those types of items, or cleaning out of the garage, we still see those, and that's a normal special pickup item. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, did you get your question answered? I was glad. Thank you. Ma'am?
Sorry, I didn't mean to follow up on the rats with this question, but I just wanted to ask about the restaurant that's going in at High Point. I know that we gave the $4.5 million loan for the Homewood Suites project, but we didn't really know how much money needed to be made up in order for that project to get going. The restaurant, I heard the gentleman say, or maybe it was the board, said that it was a total of like 1.3...
1.6.
Okay. 1.6 million that he needed, and we're giving 153,000.
Correct.
Do we know, I mean, is that enough to make it go forward? Because we were told that, like, the restaurant was going to open last fall, then it was going to open this spring. For all I know, it's not the same restaurant we're talking about, but we've been given various dates when something was going to open on that ground floor of High Point. So, I'm just curious, do we know, is the 153,000 going to make the difference for this? That it's going to go forward?
What you said, it's all we're going to give them. That is the cap that we can give them, correct, sir?
That's true.
That's the cap we can give them.
Right. I understand that's the cap we can give them. Do we know how much of the 1.6 million he yet has to raise, or does he have the rest of it, and our 153,000 is the cherry on top?
Go ahead.
This is, this, it was presented to us that this is the gap that the restaurateur has, and so the project is proceeding through the process, and the $153,000 is the gap that was needed in order for the project to come to fruition.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not repeating what happened with Homewood Suites, because we approved, or you guys approved, that loan back in April, and we still don't know how much money they need to make up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board? Yes, sir.
I'll be really honest, I wrote a public comment earlier today when I was feeling really frustrated about our agenda item tonight, about the legal agreement, and then I told myself I wasn't going to read this, but as I'm sitting here tonight, I know that I'm going to regret it if I don't read this. There is a number that I want to talk about. It's the number 31. It has now been 31 months. It has now been over two and a half years since two members of our village legal department personally tried to bribe and to threaten me when I was a candidate for this office. I have personally witnessed some of our village attorneys engaged in candidate and voter suppression, and they have been acting with the explicit support and encouragement of members of this board. It has been 31 months, and there has been zero accountability. In these past 31 months, these two village attorneys have received an additional combined $1 million in public compensation, compensation approved by the same members of this board who have approved some of their unethical conduct. This is very, very serious. If I seem frustrated, it is because I am. I have been carrying this frustration for 31 months. My only question for this board is how much longer we are going to do this? How many more months are we going to go on ignoring the blatant, I will say it, corruption in our village legal department? After 31 months of waiting, I am starting to lose the little patience that I have left. That is my comment for tonight.
Okay. You got any more names you want to repeat?
I don't want to call it.
I have one. I remember my thought, and it's a suggestion.
Okay.
Hi, sorry. I remembered, I know there's all this about the Ethics Commission, and, you know, we got the lawyer, the priest, and the rabbi. I know the commissions have up to 20 people on them. Just a suggestion is, why don't we have more ethics commissioners? Why don't we have a board of 10 commissioners? So, there's more people that weigh into this with more expertise, because I think putting everything on these three with, you know, lawyer in tandem to it, if we all talk about our commissions, am I correct, can have up to 20 members? Is that the... It's just a suggestion. Maybe more than just the three would improve our, the village's, you know, transparency and ethics responsibility. Thank you. Sorry, that's what I forgot earlier.
Good point. Anybody else? If not, chair, I entertain a motion.
I move we adjourn.
Since it's more than business before this board, this meeting of the Skokie Village Board is hereby adjourned.